They're gonna take their love with them at the nearest outlook and they've forgotten their lives. And that's gonna be better for the community. I just wanted to thank you for listening to God's will and doing what you do to help our community. We have better people in our lives.
I'd like to add a little bit to that. I first met you all planning and zoning when you came and asked to take this dilapidated building that no one wanted, but you had a vision to see what you could do and turn it into. Just like you take broken people, broken men that have let drugs and alcohol take over their lives, but you had a vision to see what you can turn their lives around and make it be a productive part of society. And I just want to tell you how grateful I am that we have people like you to get their stuff out there to save not only our dilapidated buildings, but our dilapidated lives. So I would like to present from the Popper Bluff City Council to Jimmy and Ladonna Wagner and Crossroads Ministry in appreciation for your dedication and commitment by providing hope and guidance while brightening lives for many. April 15, 2014. Thank you all very much.
Good job, guys.
On to the next section.
Items for action at our special meeting. Item four A, in accordance with the section 110.040 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri, entitled Compensation of a Councilman, the city manager will present to each councilperson their salary for services to the City of Popper Bluff for fiscal year 2018-19. Mr. Massingham?
Can you imagine these people do this for a dollar a year? They may all need their head examined, so I make good money and some people tell me I need my head examined, so. We have plaques for each of the council members. They have a silver dollar on them. I'll just read one, then I'll present it to each council member. City of Popper Bluff, Missouri presents to Robert Smith this one dollar compensation in appreciation and gratitude for your outstanding service to the community as city councilman for the fifth ward for 2018-19 presented this fifteenth day of April 2019. We also have a plaque for the mayor pro temp, which is Steve Davis, presented to Steve Davis in recognition of outstanding service and leadership to the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri as mayor pro temp for the year 2018-2019. Then we also have a plaque for the mayor, presented to Susan McVeigh in recognition of outstanding service and leadership to the City of Popper Bluff as mayor for the year 2018 and 2019.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item B, the city clerk will present the city council for their approval of the abstract votes cast at the municipal election held on Tuesday, April the 2nd, 2019.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Each councilperson received a copy of the certified election results from the county clerk's office for the election held on April the 2nd, 2019. In the first ward, there were two candidates, Kit Skaggs, who received a total of 24 votes, and Lisa Armsperson, who received a total of 66 votes, which Lisa Armsperson won that ward. And then in third ward, Barbara Horton, who was the incumbent, ran unopposed with 41 votes. And so Barbara, of course, won that ward. And I just need verbal approval of this from council.
All those in favor? Some motion is approved? We have verbal approval of the abstract votes as presented. Thank you, Ms. Kirby. Item C, retiring city councilwoman from third ward, Barbara Horton, will address the city council.
Surprised to me. I didn't realize I was supposed to do this.
You might want to pull your microphone a little closer, please.
I really don't deal with the spoken word that often. I deal with the written word. But I want to thank everyone that helped me have a second term.
And item D, retiring councilman from first ward and mayor Susan McVeigh will address the city council.
This is harder than I thought it would be. I want to thank you all from the bottom of my heart for letting me serve the city. It has been such a pleasure and an honor since 2004 to be a part of this. I love our city and hope they can continue to do good work and do things that are productive and saving for our city and see things prosper like we have going on right now. Thank you so much for all you've done.
Item E, the city clerk will swear in the newly elected city council members. So Barbara and Lisa, if you'll come forward to the podium, please.
Aye, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Barbara.
Do solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that of the state of Missouri.
And that of the state of Missouri.
And of the ordinances.
And of the ordinances.
Of the city of Popper Bluff.
Of the city of Popper Bluff.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of Popper Bluff.
The duties of Popper Bluff.
Of said city to the best of my ability.
Of said city to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, at this time, the chair will receive nominations for the office of mayor for the City of Popper Bluff for the year 2019 through 2020. And please speak up so I can hear who says what.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Robert Smith for mayor.
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
Make motion nomination cease and proceed to elect.
Okay, I'll do a roll call vote. Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Carson?
Yes.
And Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Robert Smith is our new mayor for 2019 through 2020. Okay, and at this time, I entertain nominations for the office of mayor pro temp for the City of Popper Bluff for the year 2019 through 2020.
I nominate Steve Davis.
Second.
Hearing no further nominations, make motion nomination cease and proceed to elect.
Councilwoman Carson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes. Mayor Pro Temp Davis is still Mayor Pro Temp Davis. Okay, and that concludes.
Make a motion, adjourn.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned.
Kind of bear with me a little bit, folks. This is kind of new to me. A regular meeting of the city council of the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri, to be held on Monday, April 15th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. The meeting will now come to order, and we will have the invocation by Jimmy Wagner with Crossroads Ministry.
While I have the mic for a second, I wanted to invite you guys to the open house. It's on the 15th from 11:00 to 1:00 at the Old Hint School Building. Also, the ribbon cutting is on the 4th of June at 8:30. So I would really like to show you all what the Lord has done down there. Lord Jesus, we just come to you right now and gathered together. Just want to, just grateful and thankful to live in this wonderful place that we call Popper Bluff. God, I just ask that you lead and guide each council member here. Give them strength, give them knowledge, and give them wisdom to make the decisions that need to be made. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. And please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance by the Girl Scout Troop Number 71596.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mrs. Kirby, please.
Councilwoman Carson?
Here.
Councilman DeGerris?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilman Cornman?
Here.
Councilman Black?
Here.
Mayor Pro Temp Davis?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Disclosure of interest. Any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the agenda or with any matter discussed in a previous meeting. Hearing the unwill now go to innocent's input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the intended agenda. First, we have Jerica Fox, please.
Jerica Fox, 1426 Sylvan Drive, Popper Bluff. Mayor, members of the council, I'm here before you tonight regarding a downtown event. This will be our second annual, our first year that we're sanctioned by the St. Louis Barbecue Society, but better known as the Barbecue Street Wars. Takes place on Vine Street. Last year, we went from Fifth to Broadway. This year, we're Sixth to Main Street. So we've grown by two blocks this year. But tonight, I'm here before to ask permission for alcohol at the event. Personally, downtown Popper Bluff will not have a beer tent. One will be held inside the perimeter of Bronzal Brew Company. The other will be held at Haffey's Sports Bar and Grill. So those will be the two establishments that will be serving the alcohol.
What was the first one?
Bronzal, right across from City Hall.
I didn't understand you.
That's okay.
Will those, and that will be held within those buildings?
As far as Bronzal, they will be inside that gated front patio area. Haffey's will be in the parking spot right outside of theirs, which is where they were last year as well. Any questions?
Make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Motion has been made and second that we approve her request. All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Just to give you a little information on it, it is Friday, May 3rd, from 5:00 to 9:00, and Saturday, May 4th, from 10:00 to 4:00. Anybody, that's welcome to come out, whether you like cornhole music, Wing Wars. This year, you do get a try competition meet, so we will have a People's Choice Award. So there's something for all ages, and even if you don't like barbecue, we have Auntie Anne's, Tasty Snow Crab. So don't just have to like barbecue to come. So thank you all.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to our consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single vote of the city council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered heavily, he or she may request to do so.
Motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed? Motion carried. Approval of the minutes. The city clerk will present minutes of the city council meetings held on March 4th, 2019, and March 18th to the city council for their approval. Workshop items for discussion. The city council will review a proposed ordinance adopting the Pike Creek Hydraulic Analysis Engineering Report relative to the Community Development Block Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. I can't ever get away from my old job, it seems. I actually wrote the grant that paid for this study before I came to work for the city. And this was part of a community development block grant that the city received that paid for an analysis of Pike Creek from, basically, along the new extension of Shelby Road that requires the city adopt this study for the closeout of the grant. If you have any questions, I may try to answer them, and if not, Mr. Cobb with Smith and Company is also in the audience if I can't answer your questions.
Make a motion to pass this voting session. It will be held later tonight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass this to the night voting session. All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed? The city council will review a recommendation from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding the disposal of antiquated records. Mr. Bill Bobb?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, the city clerk's office has a records retention manual outlines when and how we dispose of antiquated records. This is controlled by the state records retention manual. Length of times we must keep records vary on what type of records they are. Some records we must keep for the life of the utility, therefore anything we can lawfully dispose of, we would like to do on a routine basis. We have not done this in five years, so we're wanting to get rid of some records, I believe they outlined in your packet. This was discussed at the earlier advisory board and recommend the destruction of antiquated records. Any questions?
Make a motion, pass that to voting session later tonight.
Second.
I believe it's on May 6.
May 6.
May 6, a correction. Thank you.
We have second?
Second.
A motion has been made and second that we move this item to the voting session on May 6. All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed? The city council will review a proposed amendment to the Code of Ordinances increasing the fees for street cutting permits at the street department and for interim fee for the cemetery. Mr. Lawson?
I'll do this. Yes, you should have received in your packet a list of fees for street cutting permits, driveway installation of pipes, cemetery fees. Mr. Lawson, street superintendent, called several other cities and got some prices to make sure we weren't out of line on our new fees. These haven't been changed since, looks like, November of 2007, and we think they're easily justifiable with the cost of benefits and pay raises over the years that it costs to do each of these items. But if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to try to answer them.
Our motion is to be made to the voting session, May 6.
Second.
A motion has been made and second that we move this to the May 6 voting session. All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed? Motion carried. The city council will review a request from the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve a request for a sidewalk waiver for a platted undeveloped subdivision in general residential district, property Blackstone subdivision located at 1637 Baron Road, and the applicant is Ret Nun, care of John Ret Nun, 2573 Stone Ridge Drive. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mayor. As he stated, the request is to eliminate the requirement for a sidewalk in this new subdivision. Currently, city ordinances require any new subdivision to have sidewalks built when they're constructed. Mr. Nun is developing 14 lots approximately at 1637 Baron Road. It's going to be called the Brookstone Subdivision. The Planning and Zoning Commission, along with the Planning Department, requests that he be granted a waiver to not construct sidewalks in this neighborhood. You know, I hate to come and ask you for that, but there are no sidewalks in that neighborhood. There are no sidewalks on Baron Road. The other subdivisions that are along Baron Road, Miller Lane, and then some, all the other ones, none of those were required to have sidewalks when they were put in. So we do, like I said, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Planning Department both ask that you grant this request to Mr. Nun.
Make a motion, we pass this to the voting session, May 6.
Second.
A motion has been made and second that we pass this to the voting session on May 6. All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed? Motion carried. The city council will review a request from Planning and Zoning to approve a request for a conditional use permit to operate a drive-through window for the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages at 2865 Tucker Road, which is in a C2 general commercial district. The applicant is McAllister's Deli Restaurant, care of David Kirby Turnkey Investments.
I should just state, thank you, Mayor. As he stated, McAllister's Deli and care of David Kirby are requesting a conditional use permit to operate a drive-through window for the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages at 2865 Tucker Road, which is the western corner of Shelby Road and north of Tucker Road. The staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of this conditional use request for a drive-through window with the following two stipulations. The conditional use permit will go with the business owner. If ownership changes, the new owner would have to apply for a conditional use permit to continue to operate the drive-through window, and also no alcoholic beverages may be sold through this drive-through window.
Make a motion, pass it to the voting session, May 6.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed? The city council will review requests received for engineering qualifications relative to design and inspection services for the downtown Popper Bluff infrastructure improvement project.
Yes, this is a, for a CDBG grant for the downtown area, it would be replacing sidewalks, infrastructure improvements, possibly lighting, underground lighting and utilities in a several block area on Vine Street. We had received qualification, engineering qualifications from two different firms, Horner, Schiffern, and Smith and Company, myself, city planner Matt Winters, and Lyndale Coleman, who's the electrical superintendent at Utilities, rated these. You know, as I've said before in other meetings, both firms are qualified to do this. There was just a few points spread, but when you add up all three qualifications or all three raters recommending that it be awarded to Smith and Company.
Motion, move this item to the voting session and be held May 6.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed? The city council will review a recommendation from the Residential Housing Board to include a new section in the Popper Bluff Code of Ordinances entitled Parking on Unimproved surfaces.
So I received a copy of this proposal in your packets. If you'd like for me to read it, I'm happy to. It's only a couple paragraphs. No motorized vehicle, trailer, recreation vehicle, camper, or boat shall be parked upon any front lawn, unimproved area of any property, or obstructing any sidewalk within the City of Popper Bluff for more than 24 hours in areas with zoning designations of RS, RD, or RA. Front lawn is defined in this section to be part of the lawn between the house or building and any street, road, or highway, whether publicly or privately owned. Front lawn shall not include any improved parking area as defined by the zoning ordinance of the city. Notwithstanding the provisions of this section, parking of vehicles on unimproved grassy areas shall not be in violation when such parking is temporary and in conjunction with a special event, such as an athletic event or a festival event. It is an affirmative defense to prosecution for parking or storing vehicles on an unimproved surface if an existing residence surface if an existing residence has no improved parking surface or no access to improved parking surface, such as allowed street parking on the day of the passage of this ordinance. However, at such time that such existing resident, residence is completely rebuilt or improvements to the same real property constitute 50% or more of the property's total assessed value, compliance with this section is required. So as the mayor stated, this is, comes from the residential housing advisory board. It was one of the things that, one of the items that was brought to our attention were complaints by residents of vehicles, trailers, RVs, campers, things like that parked in the front of houses in the grass. Do you have any questions? This is actually, just a little bit more, I mean, this is not something that if passed would be unique to Papa Bluff. Most of the wording in this, of course, came from other city ordinances around the state that I looked at and researched while I was working on this, putting this together. So it's not, we wouldn't be the only ones to be, to be looking at something like this and considering something like this.
Now, is that just on the front lawn or any grassy areas? Because some people have grass in the backyards and on the sides, and so let's kind of clear that up for them.
The front lawn. It says, on any front lawn that's unimproved.
Okay.
I mean, there are, you know, there, there are definitely areas in town that this is an issue, you know, and I think as, you know, the residential housing advisory board, my job as a city planner and, is to help protect property values. And, you know, when, when your neighbor takes action that negatively affects your property value, I think it's the city's place to try to provide some protection to that property owners, so.
Now, did I understand that you said for not more than 24 hours?
That's what the ordinance says, yes.
Okay.
That's what the proposal says, yes.
Mayor, residential housing board, the concern is really not probably parking on the grass as much as parking on the grass to the point it becomes a mud hole, and, and that is really the concern when we see those spots in front of homes that are just really become, my mother would say, a mud lolly. And to avoid that for the sake of the adjoining property owners.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Winters?
Make a motion, we pass it to the May 6th voting session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item H, the city council will, will review a proposed ordinance calling for an election in the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, under question, shall the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, redefine the Highway 67 expansion as defined in the ballot measure approved by the voters in the election dated April 5th, 2005? The current language from Papa Bluff, Missouri to Fredericktown, Missouri, would be replaced with, from the Arkansas, Missouri state line to Fredericktown, Missouri. If approved, no other language, stipulations, parameters, or functionality of the previously approved measure shall change.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if you'll recall, back in April of 2005, there was a ballot measure to four-lane 67 highway from Papa Bluff to Fredericktown. It was a half-cent sales tax. It was, it's got a 30-year sunset on it. The project was supposed to cost a lot more than it ended up costing because of Senator Kitbon and Congresswoman Joanne Emerson were able to get a lot of federal funds dumped into that project. So instead of it, the tax ending in 30 years or taking 30 years to pay off the bonds for that project, they will be paid off in February or March of next year. I think if people would have known back then that it was going to pass overwhelmingly like it did, I think it was a 69% yes vote, that they would have included on the ballot from the Arkansas line to Fredericktown, but they really didn't even know if they had a shot to do the north part. So what we're asking now on this ballot, and I'm going to pass these out to each of We've worked with, the Highway 67 Commission has worked with MoDOT, we've talked about different grants that are available, and it was suggested that what we do is we redefine the project on the ballot language. So what I'm going to do is read the ballot language that would be on the August ballot of this year. Shall the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri redefine the Highway 67 expansion as defined in the ballot language, or ballot measure approved by voters in the election dated April 5th, 2005? The current language from Papa Bluff, Missouri to Fredericktown, Missouri, would be replaced with, from the Arkansas, Missouri state line to Fredericktown, Missouri. If approved, no other language, stipulations, parameters, or functionality of the previously approved measure shall change. I know a lot of you all have heard about the I-57 project. Of course, there's a lot of excitement about that, that could be years down the road, but before any of that can happen, the four-laning down to the Arkansas line is the biggest, I guess the largest chunk for that to happen. So in order, in order for the I-57 project to happen, this needs to be passed. We're going to ask the voters in August if you all approve this ordinance or resolution. I know Steve Halter at the chamber, myself, and Bill Robinson, who's the Highway 67 chairman now, have worked on this for several months. MoDOT has approved the ballot language, our city attorney's approved the ballot language. Mr. Robertson's, Robinson's actually in the audience, and either one of us would be more than happy to answer any questions.
Just clarification, I understand this will be built to interstate specifications, perhaps you could add that?
Yes, it will be. From the intersection south of town that goes to Donovan, all the way to the Arkansas border, it would be interstate standards. It looks like from the estimates from MoDOT, it's a $50 million project. Our sales tax brings in $2.5 million. What we are hoping to do, if this passes in August, we will apply for a, it's called a build grant through the highway transportation, the federal government, up to $25 million, and then we would have a cost share program with MoDOT for another $10 million, and then the remainder would be picked up with the sales tax.
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor, I think this is a wonderful opportunity for us. Certainly, I think we all, citizens of Papa Bluff, made a very good decision to, now that we could have enjoyed four-lane to the north, and this will make it available to the south. It'll make Papa Bluff a more viable, active community, and particularly even as it would sound like, likely become all interstate at some point, we believe. And it's just a, it's just a win-win thing for us, and I hope this is something that'll receive the support in the future that it has in the past. If our former mayor was speaking, I think she would want to say to us that Papa Bluff has had considerable comments from others around the state about our ability to get together and do something like that, and perhaps in some cases have been a bit jealous of us of being able to do it because of the benefit that comes out of it.
On the, on the new four-lane driving to St. Louis, of course, MoDOT started keeping statistics after that was four-laned, and accident rate has dropped 28% since, 28% since it's been a two-lane highway, and that doesn't include deer accidents. If you include deer accidents, I think it's 30%, so we can't control what the deer do, though.
Yes.
Mayor and members of the council, Susan McVeigh, 211 Kayleigh Circle, Papa Bluff. Yes, there has been so many lives that have been saved since we went together and voted that in, and thank you for bringing it up. We also just want to get the job finished, finish what we started. We only have 12 miles left, and it is just something that's very needed, and again, when I go around the state through the Missouri Municipal League, serving on other committees, they are jealous of, of a city that would come together, the citizens of a city that would come together and vote in a tax on themselves that would provide 57 miles of highway that is not even in their city limits. So that is a great tribute to our city and our citizens. So I would appreciate, if everybody could get 10 people to say yes to vote, this thing will pass. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Bill Robinson, 901 Vine Street. Good to be here tonight for this occasion. Talked to Dr. Lawson a little bit this afternoon about this ballot measure being placed before you tonight, and he just...
Will you might speak up a little more?
All right.
Please.
Can you hear me now? There we go. Basically, I'm trying to say Dr. Lawson said hello and greetings, and he, options are doing well. This was about an hour ago. A lot has been said, not a lot for me to say at this point. As a part of the 67 Corporation, folks are excited. We're not getting a lot of folks coming to us to say, you know, this is a terrible idea, what are you thinking? It's more, when can we start? And it's, there's an excitement in the community and the success that Mark talked about. 28% reduction in accidents is phenomenal. Going from a two-lane to a four-lane is a great, a great thing for the community and for others, for, for folks outside of this community. The economic development side of it has been outstanding. If Steve was here, he would, I'm sure, be championing the private investment that's been made into the city. So it's, it's a great project, and just thank you for this time.
Make a motion, we move this item to the voting session, May 6th.
Excuse the councilman, I guess, we have one more comment.
Jim Crispin, 464 North Main Street. This was, brings up a question that I was going to ask at the first meeting, but we didn't have much going on at the first meeting. But one of my favorite subjects is the expansion of the city limits of Papa Bluff. And I'd like to tie that into this kind of thing. We're talking about something, a highway system that certainly will improve Papa Bluff. But so would the expansion of the city limits of Papa Bluff. I don't know how many of you have looked at it, but it has been piecemealed together for so long, and this problem has been ignored forever, for 20, 30, 40 years. The city of Papa Bluff has not physically grown, and it needs to happen. And I put together a number of reasons that I think it should happen. We should be able to expand and capture the significant sales tax that is now growing in the county. Stores are building outside.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, in all due respect to Mr. Crispin, this is not the issue that you all are discussing right now. It's a totally different subject. He is certainly welcome to come back during citizens' input and talk about the meritorious issues of expanding the city limits, but this is not the proper time for him to pursue that.
I'm suggesting, Mr. Attorney, that this should be part of the same project or part of the same vote.
It's not possible to make that as a ballot issue, Mr. Crispin. I understand, and I appreciate your creativity, but it's not a part of what the city council is contemplating in this.
Very good, we'll bring it back in future meetings.
But please come back during citizens' input at any future meeting.
Thank you for your time. Action required items.
Make a motion, we move this item to the voting session, May 6th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Action required items. The city council will take action on an ordinance adopting a third amendment to an amendment between the city of Papa Bluff and West Star Energy.
Motion for first reading of Bill Number 8139.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion for second reading of Bill 8139.
Here's a...
First, first reading.
First reading.
Clarification, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
You got one clarification, then I'll need another one.
Okay.
You ready for me?
Yes.
We have, we have one number here and one number there. So is it 8139 or 8138 on the, on our screens?
It's 8139.
Okay, okay. It is 8139, okay.
Okay.
All you need, I'm lost.
Bill Number 8139, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to execute a third amendment to the contract for management services between the city of Papa Bluff and West Star Energy Incorporated.
Motion for second reading of Bill 8139.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
Bill Number 8139, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Papa Bluff to execute a third amendment to a contract for management services between the city of Papa Bluff and West Star Energy Incorporated.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Roll call, vote, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Bill Number 8139 is adopted. Bill Number 8140, the city council will take action on an ordinance adopting the hydraulic analysis for Pike Creek relative to the community development block grant.
Motion for first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
Bill Number 8140, an ordinance approving and adopting the hydraulics analysis of Pike Creek relative to a community development block grant for the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for second reading of Bill 8140.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
Bill Number 8140, an ordinance approving and adopting the hydraulics analysis of the Pike Creek relative to a community development block grant for the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for adoption of 8140.
Second.
Roll call, vote, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Bill Number 8140 has been adopted. Bill Number 8141, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to execute an agreement between the city of Papa Bluff and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Dispatchers Group Locals 702, for its members who are employees of the police department dispatchers.
Motion for first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counselor?
Bill Number 8141, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Papa Bluff and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 702, for its employees and the Papa Bluff Police Department dispatchers.
Motion for second reading of Bill 8141.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
Bill Number 8141, "An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Papa Bluff and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 702, for its employees and the Papa Bluff Police Department Dispatchers."
Motion for adoption.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Mrs. Kirby?
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
No.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
We have six yes votes and one no vote.
Bill Number 8141 has been adopted. Resolution Number 1893, "The City Council will take action on a resolution making an appointment to the Housing Authority Board."
Motion for the reading of Resolution Number 1893.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
Resolution Number 1893, "A resolution of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, making an appointment to the Papa Bluff City Housing Authority Board of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri."
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Roll call vote, Mrs. Kirby?
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Item EE, "The City Council of the city of Papa Bluff will meet in a closed session meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the open meetings law in Section 1621.1, 1621.2, 1621.3, 16.21.9, 1621.11, Section 1621.12, 1621.13, and Section 1621.14, RSMO."
Make a motion, I'm sorry, make a motion, we'll go into closed session following the City Manager's report.
Second.
Roll call vote, Mrs. Kirby?
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
City Manager.
Well, first of all, I'd like to congratulate and welcome our new council member up here. Just a couple of items. We had the Bluff Up the Bluff Saturday, a very successful, I'm not sure how many dumpsters we ended up with, but evidently there was a lot of people over there. A good day for it, I think we got it done before the rain started. A couple of weeks ago, not this past weekend, the weekend before, the Black River Coliseum had a gymnastics event, and as I understand, they had over 600 participants, and over 2,000 spectators there watching that, so our hotels and restaurants and gas stations were filled up that weekend, and that definitely helps the city. The last item is Shelby Road, I know there's been an article in the newspaper, there's been items on Facebook, and we just let the public know, we're trying to get that open just as soon as we can. There's still an issue with fencing and cattle getting out on the road, which creates a liability for the city if they accept that road. I know the paper, I think, said six to eight weeks, I'm hoping it's just a few weeks, but...
Six to eight weeks for fencing?
Yes.
It's been a part of the contract all along?
Yes, it has. So we're hoping that gets done a lot sooner than that. I've driven on it, it's a nice road, it turned out great, and, you know, we've never had that road before, so I know people are anxious to get it open, but we never had this drive on before, so a few weeks shouldn't make a big difference. But I know people get excited, it's, it's a big, a big deal for Papa Bluff, so that's all I have.
I hear a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.